Hi, good afternoon, everybody. It's 3:05. So we'll go ahead and get started again. I believe Ms. Bukarski may have been interested in doing as part of this session. If not, I will consider she was the ACSD rep during last year's report. If not, I will continue on. So I will go ahead and continue on. I just want to do a brief roll call to make sure Ms. Bukarski would like to take back over.
I am fine to do it, or you can?
No, go on.
Okay, all right. Dr. Anderson?
I'm here, present.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
Here.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I'm here.
Thank you, Ms. Darnack Kofas.
Here.
Mr. Frisch?
Here.
Ms. Hasmore Heiser, we saw you. Ms. Keys Kamara?
I'm here.
Ms. Marin?
Good day.
Ms. McLoughlin? Okay, Ms. O'Mash?
Here.
Ms. Tolan?
I'm here, thanks.
Excellent, I think Ms. McLoughlin will be joining us in a few minutes. I do want to welcome Ms. Lorenzen from, who is the ACSD Chair this year for being here, and of course, for your patience, as we are considerably behind, about 35 minutes. And we do have this session slated to go for an hour. We're very much looking forward to it. So thank you for your patience, for being here with us today. And also, I want to extend a thank you to the outgoing Chair, Ms. Sherry Belkowitz, who was part of this work last year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Honorable Members of the Board, Dr. Braybrand and staff. It's an honor, and I'm very pleased to be here, excuse me, on behalf of the Advisory Committee for Students with Disabilities to present the FY 2019-2020 Annual Report. And as you noted, the Chair last year was Sherry Belkowitz and played a major role in the writing of this report. We have an opening slide, and Mike, I think if you're ready, thank you. The slide that you're seeing, our introductory slide, has a little photo included. And I'm wondering if anyone can tell me where Dr. Braybrand is? Can anyone find him in the slide? This is a picture of our orientation in September at the Parent Resource Center.
He's in the back row.
That's right. Who found that? Congratulations. Thank you. The next slide. The Advisory Committee for Students with Disabilities, the ACSD, or the committee, is one of only three Virginia legally required citizens advisory committees. The members are all appointed by the school board. The functions of the committee are as follows. If you look at all of those, and I don't think I need to read them all to you, you'll see that they're all action. They all start with action words, advise, participate, submit, assist, and review. And participate in the review of the local schools' divisions' annual plan. That's the money that's called flow-through money for students with special needs, and it comes from the federal government to the state of Virginia, to VDOE, and then the local districts apply for that money. It states where the money will be used by the district. Next. The advisory committee is composed of 33 members in Fairfax. The representatives are appointed by the board, and they include one representative from each school board member, each assistant, region assistant superintendent, various community boards and groups, one voting student representative, and one voting teacher representative. As required by law, the majority of the members are parents of students with disabilities or have disabilities themselves, and one FCPS teacher. The staff liaisons and consultants are Mike Bloom with the Office of Special Education Instruction, Teresa Johnson, Assistant Superintendent of the Department of Special Services, Jane Strong in the Office of Special Education Procedural Supports, Mary Beth Harrison Cunningham in the Parent Resource Center, and Dawn Clements has been attending our meetings, and she represents the Am Spudsmann's office. In addition, we have a school board liaison. It was Stella Bukarski. Next. The committee is structured to align with the legal requirements and obligations under the Virginia regulations. Our subcommittees support the overall arching goal of the advisory committee of identifying unmet needs for students with disabilities in Fairfax. The subcommittees are Family Engagement and Outreach, Student Achievement and Outcomes, Policy Regulations, and the School Board Charge. We align these subcommittees with the work of the State CAC, or Special Education Advisory Committee, which is in fact required by IDEA. In addition, we appointed a nominating committee. Next. In September, we held student orientation. As I said, Dr. Braybrand attended and was, the committee was very pleased. He stayed for team-building activities and participated with us. It was held at the Parent Resource Center so that parents would get an idea, or the members of the committee would get an idea of where the Parent Resource Center is and what's available for their constituents at the Parent Resource Center. Members were provided an orientation manual, which is, used to be a big, thick manual, and now it's on a flash drive, but it was a big, thick manual that year. And it includes federal, state, and local regulations governing the committee's work on students with special needs, a committee roster, a staff directory, useful websites, and the previous year's annual report, as well as other reports and resources. Excuse me. In addition, the committee reviewed the purpose of the ACSD, operating procedures, bylaws, Robert's Rules, and the Sunshine Law. We also start a discussion on what will be the focus for the following year. We review the parent, the public comments from the previous year, and all members contribute input to that discussion of that as well. Next. The ACSD appreciates all the numerous staff members who supported the committee's work. The following educators and staff from DSS gave nine informative presentations to the committee. These presentations were essential in helping us understand what Fairfax County was actually doing in many of the areas that the committee was looking at for the subcommittees. And we know that that was critical to the decisions and the recommendations for the subcommittees to make. Next. That's the nine subcommittee, the nine presentations provided by staff. We thank Mike Bloom, the staff liaison, for arranging those. Next. The committee has a history of collaboration. Fifteen years ago, the advisory committee recommended and the district approved holding and hosting a special education annual conference. The conference was historically in April, and this last, and our 15th annual conference was scheduled for April 15th at Hayfield Secondary School, but unfortunately was canceled due to COVID. The ACSD does appreciate the work of the Office of Special Education Instruction staff who worked long and hard towards the event. And the OSS EC staff on the, we look forward to working with the staff on the 2021 conference, which has already started with a planning committee. We also look forward to having Career and Transition Services plan a student program to promote self-determination. Next. The committee receives public comment at each of the regular meetings. And we continued that during the virtual learning, virtual time. We heard 24 public comments, which was an increase, which I think helps document that we are spreading the word and getting the word out about the advisory committee. We received commendations and concerns. We received three commendations, one that commended the ACSD for working with SEPTA, and a commendation of the Office of Procedural Support for a consultation to resolve a disagreement between a parent and an IEP team regarding the VAP. And we received recognition for improvements in services for students with dyslexia. Next. The next three slides identify the concerns that were brought to the committee. These are concerns based on parent and citizen views. And the first slide, I'll just say lightly that the concerns about advanced academic courses, access, and support for 2E students, particularly for 2E students pursuing an advanced diploma. And there were concerns about implementation issues for IEPs. There was concern about, all of, one's comment was that all of the students with IEPs had been placed in one class. And of course, that brings to question the whole idea of inclusion. We don't, anyway. The additional evidence, the concerns for additional evidence-based behavior management programs, and some concerns about confidentiality of student records, and a comment suggesting that the brochure be consistently provided at IEP meetings. Next. There was a comment about providing a restraints and seclusion policy, which the district has done now. A need for increased communications to parents and teachers of all the wonderful supports and services and programs available in Fairfax County. A concern about being sure that schools inform parents about 504s and IEPs if students have a medical diagnosis and it's part of the school record. We had a student complain that recess was being taken away as a punishment at his school. We had another student say that the way she was treated caused her great anxiety, and she was able to thrive in her new school. Next. The concern was raised about a need for trauma-informed schools, and concerns about preschool autism classes and assisting the distance instruction. Next. These are the highlighted recommendations. I believe I'm on a cellphone, and we are at the executive summary. Well, I'll move to that. The ACSD continued to thrive. The meetings were very well-attended, with almost every position filled. We had 28 members of the committee. It's a large committee, and it's very active. The committee was pleased to collaborate with and greatly appreciates the efforts of the staff liaison, Mike Bloom, all the additional staff consultants, and the administrative support, which was excellent, from the administrative staff of the Office of Special Education Instruction, Natasha Anthony. The committee focus was to increase parent awareness of the ACSD and the parent knowledge. The charge for the committee is clear. And we had a subcommittee look into making recommendations for the charge. Next. The ACSD held its second meet and greet on October 22nd. The FCPS-related service providers and coordinators were present and available for parents to ask questions, learn about services, and make connections. Parents also voiced views on systemic issues, including the inconsistency of services across the district, lack of awareness of available services by both staff and parents, a failure to consider individual needs of the student in favor of established FCPS programs or what the school had available. Fear of retaliation for contacting Central Office. Both parents had some concerns of that, and concerns that their staff, their school staff may have concerns. And a lack of meaningful collaboration during their IEP meetings. The committee also advocated for and received an FCPS email address with some persistence and established accounts on both Facebook and Twitter to increase awareness of the ACSD. The committee planned to host a spring meet and greet, but was unable to due to COVID. The committee submitted a letter to the Virginia High School League to support the creation of a wheelchair division in high school athletics. Voted to commend the Office of Special Education Instruction for their openness to new ideas and bold changes to procedures involving behavior management for students with disabilities. And worked with staff and administrative support to conduct virtual meetings in May, June. Ensure, we ensured access and public comment through video and audio testimony prior to the meeting and shared virtually. These were recorded and posted on the ACSD website. We met in July and August to continue the important discussion regarding the provisions of special education services during the pandemic. And the committee provided a number of liaisons to attend FCPS focus groups. Next. The committee's four subcommittees met, and the following recommendations or highlights from those committees' reports. The first one is family engagement and outreach, and they basically made recommendations on the need to increase awareness of the committee. So those were to maintain support for the Special Education Conference, to ensure print copies of the ACSD brochure are provided, and especially at IEP meetings, to continue to support an ACSD presence at FCPS conferences and events, and to continue to support ACSD in their outreach efforts, including their meet and greets. Next. The next subcommittee was the Student Achievement and Outcomes. Their recommendations were to provide opportunities for integrated public school, preschool, to provide and promote standardized preschool screenings at every local elementary school on designated days and events, to provide Team Todd elementary school settings, to provide electives such as strategies for success before and after school. A number of parents, for a number of years, have made public comment about the difficulty for students with disabilities, particularly 2E students with disabilities, needing to give up their electives in order to receive the appropriate supports and services to promote their academic success. That means they aren't able to engage in the electives, which are in their areas of interest. And for students struggling in school, this is a great loss. Next. The Policy and Regulation Subcommittee, number one, has been done. We have developed, the district did develop a new policy on restraints and seclusion, and the advisory committee this year was actively involved in making recommendations to create quarterly reports of restraints and seclusion data, and in order to build the capacity for inclusion, to provide required training in evidence-based behavior, such as Ross Green's collaborative and proactive solutions model, to institute required training for all teachers and support staff in the crisis cycle and de-escalation and restorative justice practices, to provide additional positions, ABA coaches, ATS, speech and language, and provide more team teaching courses, to ensure mentors for special education teachers, especially new to the county or new to special education. Next. To provide schools a standardized information packet. This would be given to parents when they attend an IEP meeting, and would give them a lot of, right then, hands-on, at a point, what's called a point of performance, they would get a packet, and it would have a lot of the resources. It would give them a list of FCPS sites and other resources available to parents with disabilities in order to support their advocacy efforts on behalf of their children, to ensure local, every school adequately and routinely uses the Central Office resources available to them. FCPS spends a lot of money on specialists and Central Office staff, and it's critical that the schools see that as a resource, that each school knows that there is support in areas where they want to increase their skills or their toolbox. I see this as, or the committee sees this, as a supervision and accountability role. The district needs to ensure that these resources are being used by all the schools, to promote a climate where parents are aware of their rights and know their rights, to ensure parents have the opportunity to provide input to the board's approved independent audit for special ed services. The independent audit is coming up and beginning soon, if not already. To ensure special education orientation and training includes a parent and an older voice to sensitize staff to work collaboratively. This could possibly be done through a cameo, video-recorded appearance. I think that might be a way to do that. Next. To endorse and provide adequate hands-on training for special education staff in high-leverage education practices, including selective age-appropriate social skills development and executive function curriculum. Again, with, to support inclusion, all teachers need the appropriate training. Training for identifying and addressing trauma in students. A mechanism for staff to report suspicions of allegations of violations of policy and procedures, waste, fraud, or abuse, that will investigate outside the usual reporting channels without fear of retribution or reprisal. Establish reasonable policy for the security cameras in classrooms, particularly in classrooms for children with communications disorders. Next. Create a media campaign to familiarize families with FCPS, special education programs, organization, and staff involved with their children. And standardize and communicate district-wide policies for administrators to follow. To allow outside providers' access to disabled children during the school day, to allow parent observations, visits for parents and students to school settings considered in transition plans, and for students to choose electives in middle and high schools that reflect their own strengths and interests. To widely disseminate district practices and templates to schools for daily communication and data sharing. To ensure that special education leads and chairs are aware of and make efforts to promote system-wide events. To continue to use low-tech means to communicate important school or program information. Next. The committee provided additional COVID-19 redress recommendations. The committee requested the ACSD participate in the development of future changes to policies, procedures, or practices to serve students with disabilities prior to implementation, in accordance with the regulatory function of the committee. The ACSD represents parents from all corners of FCPS, as well as many community stakeholders, and provides valuable citizen insight and information. To develop assessments to evaluate the need for compensatory services to provide parents of all special education students an information sheet on compensatory services and recovery services. Now, that includes how to request or appeal a denial. Next. To review the ACSD issues that affect the provision of special education services, to provide detailed plans for remediation. To reconsider deployment of staff and resources, to ensure all students have access to the internet, which the district has worked diligently to do. The ACSD commends the Fairfax County Parent Resource Center for its quick transition to online and distance learning services, engaging many families of students with disabilities through their online webinar. Next, I think that concludes the presentation of the report, and I suppose if there are questions, I will try to answer them, or I will find the answers out and get them for board members. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the report. Colleagues, we're going to go ahead and start with our three-minute turns, and then we'll see where we are when everybody has had a turn with time. So if you have a question or a comment, please go ahead and put up your hand, and I will go ahead and call on you. All right. I know us better than that. Sometimes it takes a few minutes. Ms. Sizemore Heiser.
Go ahead, Dr. Anderson. Go ahead, and I'll speak after her. It's fine. I think our hand's open.
Excellent. Dr. Anderson.
Sorry. Sorry, it's taking me a little bit of time to turn on the camera and the microphone. I was doing it in reverse order. I really don't have any questions because this was quite comprehensive. I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the time that you've taken to put this together, and thank you for working through, you know, the pandemic and trying to get some of these meetings, and thank you for being so grateful and so gracious to us as we had to alter our schedule a little bit due to COVID. I just wanted to express that, but I have no concerns. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and I'll share that with the committee. I know they'll appreciate it, and we understand and appreciate all that the board has been through. This has been quite an experience, and yeah, thank you. I'll let them know.
Appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Thank you. Ms. Sizemore Heiser, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I'll go ahead if that's okay. First, thank you to Connie and to the entire committee for all your hard work and especially flexibility in shifting during COVID to keep the work going despite all the difficulty, and this is a plethora of great information and many things that I know a lot of our families have concerns about or talked about as well. So really wonderful job. I wanted to just sort of point out a couple of things. I love the part on family engagement and having that be part of our regular IEP meetings. I think that's spot on, right? And especially family information about what services we have available and the role in the IEP, and I'm wondering, you know, if there's a way we can partner with the PRC. I know the Parent Resource Center has great programs, but often our parents who attend IEP meetings don't know about those programs or aren't aware that some of them are available online, so I'm almost wondering if as part of the IEP process there can be, by the way, here's some great resources that already exist to give to our IEP parents about the Parent Resource Center.
Rasha, that's spot on. That's exactly the kind of information that we wanted to put in the packet that every parent would receive at an IEP meeting so that they would be aware of this information. The Parent Resource Center also has an excellent library available to the citizens and families, and I agree with you. I think if we were able to make it, make more people aware of that library, because they will send it, you can check books out, they send it to your local school, you pick it up at the local school, use the resource and send it back through the pony. That's exactly, and I believe there's a model. I believe this is done by Loudoun County, so there are models out there besides, you know, a team that could sort of figure out what Fairfax County wanted to put in their packet.
I love that there's models out there. If I could just, you know, make a couple plugs to my colleagues and to staff as they're listening, I really think providing a packet of information of resources and how to be an equal team member is vital for our families. I know a lot of families talk about not knowing where to go, not knowing how to be, want to be that full support for their students that don't have the knowledge, the capability, or even know where to go. It's a large system, so I really think that's such an important recommendation. I don't think it's one that's too difficult to implement. So, you know, even if it's a link online to all the, whatever, but I would highly recommend we really look at that information. And the other one that I really thought, two other pieces, everything's great here, don't get me wrong, I could talk about this for an hour, but two other pieces I wanted to highlight was sort of the consistency of policies and standardizing and communicating those policies to administrators in terms of outside providers, access, parent observations, visits, for transition plans. I have heard over and over again from the community the inconsistency from school to school in terms of what parents are allowed and outside providers and visits and electives and things like that. So I think that's a super important piece. Dr. Boyd, I'll just say, as you're getting on board and working with your staff to kind of make consistent and look at the fidelity of implementation of those policies so that our students and our families have sort of the same experience from school to school. We've learned one thing in COVID, that's the importance of that family-school partnership, and so I think both these pieces really speak to that family-school partnership. And then the last piece I'm going to just highlight is I think it is really important if we're looking at, you know, talent development, as Dr. Pasidio mentioned in one of our earlier sessions, and we're looking at folks and student strengths, to really look at providing those intervention classes before school, after school, during intervention blocks, so our students with disabilities don't become what I call resegregated in middle school and high school and have that opportunity to explore their areas of strength. I think that's a really important piece for transition, for success, so I'm going to, you know, kind of stop there. I really appreciate all your partnership, especially on the restraint and seclusion work this year, but whatever we can do to help educate our parents as to resources and how to be full partners, I think we'll just do better for our students with disabilities and their outcomes. So I really encourage you to look at some of these recommendations, especially around that engagement. So thank you for all your hard work, and thank you for your partnership. I appreciate it.
Thank you, and we're glad to have you as our liaison this year.
Thank you, Connie.
Ms. Carbit Sanders?
Hi, and Connie, thank you so much. I am so impressed with everything your group does. I know you have been engaged in this for at least the 20 years that I have known you. I think this is how we first got to know each other, so thank you so much for what you're doing here. Couple things, I want to echo the support for the after-school and before-school programming so that we do not create opportunity gaps for our students with disabilities by not having them access some of our enrichment opportunities like band strings, arts, anything else. Secondly, your recommendation for a packet, I think this is really important. I actually, it reminds me of the work that we did on twice-exceptional and the need for a handbook, and it seems to me that what we should be looking at is a handbook which is sent to parents prior to their first IEP meeting, because it gives them the heads-up of what to expect. It reminds me of my, when I was pregnant, I read What to Expect When You're Expecting. This should be what to expect out of the IEP process and what you can expect to have this world-class system support our students. And so I would suggest that we do need to do that and that there needs to be funding associated with it. That handbook should be provided in multiple languages, because as we know that our exceptional students with disabilities, many of them are also English language learners, or their families may not have the proficiency. So that would be my advocacy, and I would love to know from staff what the cost of putting a handbook together would be and how we could get it in families' hands prior to them actually going through the IEP process.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Boyd.
Good afternoon. First, I certainly want to thank the ACSD for providing feedback and for partnering with us. I know I've only been with FCPS for a short moment of time, but I certainly have enjoyed collaborating with them and look forward to collaborating with them moving forward. The first piece, we spoke after we reviewed the recommendations, and we certainly, we certainly too, believe that providing parents and families, excuse me, families as a whole with information regarding that the special education process is going to be extremely vital. You know, we talk about we want our families at the table, and we want them to be able to be informed and engaged at the table and actively involved, and so we certainly agree with providing families those resources, actually in advance of the meeting, because I know it can be a lot to kind of digest at the table. So providing those families perhaps as we send out drafts of IEPs to go ahead and attach that information, providing contact information, so if they're reviewing it and they have questions, we can kind of engage in those type of discussions before the meeting, answering any of those questions, so that as we sit around the table and we're talking about developing an IEP that's going to really be appropriate for students, that we have that opportunity to engage in that work with all parties being formed. So we certainly want to look into that, and we can certainly price out what it would cost to have the multiple languages for our students, because there's a couple of pieces. We know we have a number of students with disabilities, but we also want to support those families that are in that initial eligibility process, and so we need to anticipate that information as well. So we can certainly bring that back as a next step for the board in terms of cost and what it would look like to develop those handbooks.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Ms. Carbit Sanders, are you finished? Okay, Ms. Marin?
All I had, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon. I just wanted to share some comments. You know, the work of these advisory committees is very important and helpful, and I'm glad that Ms. Sizemore Heiser, as the Chair of the Public Engagement Committee of the School Board, is working to help us really make sure that these committees' work is used in our board input and our decision-making and accountability efforts. So, and Dr. Boyd, I'm glad you were able to speak because you're just thinking about as you continue settling in since joining us late last year, I'm eager to hear from you, your thoughts on this year's recommendations and the past year's recommendations and how we could maximize them. I do want to say that I feel that special education has been elevated and had its, you know, the needs acted upon quite a lot since I joined the board. I mean, comparing from when I'm on the board, from when I was a citizen attending meetings, you know, I've learned a lot. There's been a lot more discussion, action, acting for change, and so I do really appreciate the community advocacy, both from ACSD and other individuals, organizations, you know, it's helped tremendously. So, you know, it's that kind of advocacy that's, you know, of a critical friend that really makes a difference for kids and helps us hear you and then work together. So thank you also to my 100 mil appointee, Brandon Cassidy, and to the full committee again. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you. The Citizens Advisory Committee does in fact do that as far as helping to bring, and there are other organizations. I think one reason that we might be seeing an increase is of course the news media information that was out two years ago regarding the restraints and seclusion, but I think a bigger overarching reason may be the fact that the district has moved towards inclusion. And once we move towards inclusion, then I think there are many supporting efforts that are used to support struggling students or students with disabilities that now need to be used by general ed teachers, and it's really important that the general ed staff is provided these skills and these tools because they have students in their classrooms that have disabilities and are struggling, even if they haven't yet been identified as students with a disability, or students who are simply in need of extra support. So I believe the resources and the techniques and the pedagogy, so to speak, of the students with special needs is really going to help Fairfax County with its goals to reach every student and to meet the needs of every student, to meet the students where they are. So I think you're right. The advocacy is, it has been definitely up. As Karen said, I've been doing this a long time, and I will jump back and say I will really look forward to meeting everyone face-to-face and working with Dr. Boyd, who I haven't yet met face-to-face, and I'm really looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, hi. I wanted to echo the huge thank you for the incredible work that your committee has done here, and wanted to especially thank you or tell you how impressed I am with the information that you gather from the community, and, you know, even just knowing that the list of, you know, concerns came through a process like that, I think says a lot about the incredible work that you're doing. I also just wanted to give your group a huge thank you for the collaborative effort that you spent with the board around redoing that restraint and seclusion, you know, policy. I know as a board member, you know, talking with Lucy John at my Dreamsville representative and, you know, other people in the community, it was extremely helpful in, you know, working on that and then working with staff, so I wanted to thank you for that as well. And then colleagues, I just wanted to put out, you know, this Parent Resource Center is an incredible resource, and I know a number of my colleagues are doing this. I have a Dreamsville PTA group that meets fairly regularly, and for our last meeting we had someone from the Parent Resource Center speak about the resources that they have available so that all of the PTA leaders would know that they were out there and they offered to, you know, get speakers for PTA meetings and things like that. So that's just another suggestion, another way to get the word out.
Excellent way. Thank you, because I didn't mean to interrupt, but thank you. I have myself done exactly that with PTAs, and nobody who attended the meeting knew the Parent Resource Center existed, staff or students, and they felt the same way you're feeling. It's such an excellent resource, and the fact that so many of their presentations now, and of course the ACSD advocated for it for a long time, to have their presentations recorded, but many of them are available on YouTube. They have a YouTube channel, and many of their past presentations, which are excellent, and people can avail themselves at their own, you know, time. So thank you for pointing that out. I appreciate it. Makes me very happy.
Yeah, absolutely. Just need to get the word out, but thank you again for your service. Really, really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Ms. Dernak Konchak, you're up next.
Yes, and I too want to say thank you to you and your fellow committee members. We know how hard you work. We know that, you know, we feel like we have made a lot of strides, but we have more to go, but so thank you for all of your collaborative work this year. We do appreciate all that you've done and all that you will continue to do, we know. I do have a question, because I know a little bit about this, but maybe I'm misunderstanding. On your recommendation number two, to offer and promote standardized preschool screenings at local elementary schools, and you says as opposed to the way it is done now. Now, kind of, maybe I'm missing something here about, well, the way Childfind works and what you would like, what your thoughts are, your committee's thoughts are, as opposed to the way we're currently doing it. I kind of need more clarification on that.
Okay, well, of course, we had a different subcommittee chair that wrote that recommendation in the subcommittee. My understanding is, and I'd be happy to get some more information for you, is that this is done, it's not, it's not, I don't believe it's Childfind, but it's done by schools at their discretion, and it isn't well-publicized, and the goal, of course, is to have the preschool supports and services available and for everyone to know about them throughout the district. But if you don't mind, I will get you some more information on that.
Yeah, yeah. And I ask you that because I had been, and I don't know if you know this about me, Connie, but for years I served on the Childcare Advisory Council, and we talked about, you know, the benefits of Childfind and how we worked in tandem as the county and the schools, and so I think I need clarification on that because I thought it was, you know, Childfind, I think is, if I'm recalling and I'm trying, I think it's like for birth through two, and then you also have two through four different subcategories. So, yeah, so anything you can find out for me as to the thoughts and how we can improve that, because I thought we were doing it fairly well back in the day when I was working with it a little bit more hands-on, but any improvements we a little bit more hands-on. But any improvements we need to make, I would be happy to work with and, and help you work with that in the county, however we can do that.
Will do. I think Childfind is working very well. I've heard very positive comments about Childfind. So I think this is a little something different. A little something different, Tammy. So I'll, I'll get specifics on that. I'm sorry, I can't clarify.
That's okay. That's what this dialogue is for, to help us each understand and, and to help us work better. So thank you so much and, and thank you all, your committee members who are listening. Thank you all for your hard work. We really do appreciate you.
Well, I will say to you and to the rest of the board that the committee greatly appreciated the opportunity to collaborate. So on, on the new policy, we, we felt that that process worked extraordinarily well and we were very pleased with the results.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Omech?
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Lorenzen and, you know, the entire committee really for your hard work in putting this together. I actually wanted to take advantage of this, of my time to yield it to Dr. Boyd, to hear a little bit more about her thinking around how to potentially implement some of these recommendations. I know, you know, committees come forward often and, and bring their good thinking that they've spent a year or more, depending on their, you know, tenure, developing staff obviously have the opportunity to respond and, and decide accordingly what's going to be implemented. But it is your best thinking. And having been on some of these committees, I mean, it can often be frustrating when you have a, a large group of experts coming to a consensus on what should be implemented without necessarily seeing it enacted. And I know there's a huge opportunity here with Dr. Boyd being, oh, did I, did I disappear?
We can hear you.
Okay. And there's a huge opportunity here with Dr. Boyd being new. So I'll, I'll yield my time.
Boyd there?
Thank you, Ms. Omech.
Yeah.
Again, this, you know, we're in our infancy stages in collaboration, but a number of the things that we've had an opportunity to hear, not from only ACSD, but from other stakeholders as we've engaged in dialogue, that we certainly want to make priorities as a, as a department. One of those is making sure, again, as we spoke a little bit earlier, that parents are informed and they feel empowered to really actively participate in the IEP process. A second is making sure that all of our educators are available and aware of the resources and strategies to appropriately support students with disabilities. And so we, we need to continue to evaluate and reflect on our professional development process and our coaching to make sure that we're not only supporting those special educators, but also providing those supports and enhanced supports for our general ed colleagues as our students are included in the general education settings. And then other piece that has been said a lot that we're going to focus on as we collaborate with our building leaders and other leadership team is that consistency or that continuity across schools. We know that we are a large division and we certainly know that we have some really, really skilled leaders leading our schools and they certainly need to have autonomy. But we want to make sure that with some things that we have consistencies in terms of processes, protocols, because we don't want anyone to have that differential treatment based on where they attend school. And again, I know that we all have the same goals with increasing student achievement, supporting our families, all of those things are in place. But just to see how we align those perhaps a little differently to ensure that there's continuity of services and supports across our district. So those are a few things. And I know there's a number of other pieces certainly that we want to work on as we're supporting closing the achievement gap and looking at providing that, you know, social emotional learning and supporting students' social, emotional and behavioral needs. And we've begun that work. But those are just a few nuggets, a few tidbits. But I certainly will want to give opportunity for Mr. Bloom or Dr. Strong to add on to that as they work in the division and may have some additional information to add.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. I actually see Dr. Ivy's hand up. I don't know. Dr. Ivy, would you like to comment on this?
Sure. Ms. Lorenzen, I just want to say thank you on behalf of Dr. Braybrand. He could not be here today, but he wanted me to specifically thank you and the committee for all of the hard work and the collaboration and the partnership. And he's very proud of the work that was accomplished this year. And he fully supports many of the recommendations that were listed. And many of them, knowing Dr. Braybrand for a long time, are core values of his. And so he looks forward to continuing to partner with, with you. Dr. Boyd mentioned many of them, but just a few others that I think are priorities for us are the talent development as well as interventions, which we are definitely focused on, particularly at this time, and developing a plan. And I particularly am so glad to see the career in transition services that you're planning. And any way that I can support that, I'd be happy to.
Well, thank you. That's very kind and we appreciate. And I will share with the committee who has worked hard to collaborate and work to support the efforts of, of the board with regard to the new policy particularly, I will, I know the committee will be very pleased. Yes.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin, you're up next.
Ms. Pokarski, I think Mr. Bloom had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't see that. Oh, there it is. He's a presenter. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you so much, Ms. Pokarski. Yes, I wanted to also add that what we're going to do in the Department of Special Services is we're going to take the recommendations from the report. And we're also going to take into consideration the priorities from our leadership team as well as this session today. And we're going to develop a response to all of the recommendations that were part of this report. So in the next couple of weeks, we're going to further look at and discuss priorities. Some of the recommendations, we've already begun to make some changes within our systems and others, we're going to start some fresh work moving forward. And so I just wanted to mention that as part of our next steps, we'll be taking a much closer look and we'll be actually providing that input as a response to the recommendations. So you and the ACSD and the school board and our parent community will have an idea of the priorities that we're going to be moving forward with.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom. Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. I too want to extend my appreciation to Connie Lorenz. It's beautiful to see you visually and have so appreciated your incredible dedication to this work and all that it's helped the board do over the years. And certainly want to also give a special shout out to the Braddock District Representative, Liz Baccato. So appreciate all the time that Liz put in on behalf of our district. Connie, as you know, one of my, my core values is that we really do capitalize on the knowledge and advocacy that we receive from our community. And so I think my colleague, Ms. Omech, sort of really touched on it, but I wanted to ask you from not just this year, because I appreciate what Mr. Bloom just said and I, and I appreciate the partnership that Dr. Boyd is talking about. But what can we do as a board, given all your years of service on ACSD, that you would want us to be particularly focused on to make this hard work in this report meaningful? Like what, what can we do to facilitate that from our level? Because you are the advisory committee to us.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Megan. I, I think what I would like is for the district to do a little bit more top-down. I think there's a real need for supervision and accountability. I see many things in the recommendations that the district already considers practice or procedures. And unfortunately, there are schools or individuals who are either unaware of those practices, procedures, policies or regulations. I don't know. It's kind of a best case, worst case, but it's definitely a communications piece. And I think if administrators, and we're getting a lot of new school administrators as people age out, and I don't fault them, but I have for clients, maybe, maybe creating an atmosphere where, I said earlier, the using of the resources when there is a disagreement. It was a client and I was the one who commended the Office of Procedural Support because I had a client who took a very hard stand regarding her child being denied eligibility for VAP. And it was a significantly disabled child who was going to be sent back to a base school and had been, you know, intellectually disabled and had been placed in a center. And the interpretation of the team was that they did not have an IQ test. So they could not, could not find her eligible. And I discussed things with the parents and made the decision to reach out to the Office of Procedural Support. And I told them that the parent would be contacting them. And the support was excellent. They, that office reached out with VDOE, discussed and debated the situation with what the parents' concerns were, came back, reported it to the school, and we had an excellent resolution. And I don't think the IEP team meant to, I, I think it was a misinterpretation of, of the information. And so I just think it's really critical that principals and, or it's looked at, what they do, collecting data and seeing, I don't care what they, you know, whether they get support from foreign language or whether they get support from, you know, the math departments. But somebody needs to be looking, because I, I honestly believe there are schools that reach out very little. And maybe assistant superintendents or region superintendents in the, the regional superintendents know who they are, but I think principals need to be held accountable. And I think if you don't hold them accountable, you're going to get inconsistencies because they feel like they can get away with it or they don't need to be proficient. That's the best answer I think I have for you.
No, that's wonderful, Connie. And I really appreciated what Dr. Boyd said and what Dr. Braybrand has certainly shared with, with our board, both current and past, which is so much of this with 200 schools, 200 principals and countless more assistant principals and other department heads within the schools. All of this comes down to how each IEP team operates and functions. And really, it is that fidelity of, of implementation and service, the accountability piece. And so I, I do want to again emphasize to my colleagues that, to what Ms. Marin said earlier, certainly in, in my tenure on the board, special education's been a very strong focal point. But when you have a superintendent like Dr. Braybrand and prior to him, Karen Garza, who understood that it's going to really take strong leadership at the top and it's going to really help us honor our words and caring culture and deliver it in action. And so I, I just want to finalize by saying that please maybe send a follow-up email to the board. I'd love some recommendations from ACSD to what some of my other colleagues said, how we can really push out this information. You know, we send these news you choose communications out, but like the Parent Resource Center absolutely want to emphasize in instruction manual, instruction books, anything we can do to raise our family's awareness because not everybody can find someone like you, Connie, and some of our other great advocates. And just want to thank everybody so much for all you do every day.
Well, thank you very much. And, and it is a big job, but building infrastructure is what the big bucks from, you know? So people are making big bucks in FCPS. And with all due respect, if no one is critically looking and no one's being held accountable, then Fairfax County is falling short of what I expect as a citizen.
Yep. The value of central office to help in all of that. Yep.
And to be seen as a resource, as a support, to be used. And someone's got to be tracking that. And if they are tracking it, I'm not aware of it. And they may be tracking it. I'm not saying they don't. But, you know, either, in some way, they need to be reached out to principals and certainly many steps to help solve the problems. But I, I, I attended many committee meetings in my local schools, school improvement plans every year, reading, reading, reading. Well, reading is a big thing. But if you don't meet your goals and you don't change what you're doing, your school's reading levels are not going to increase.
Thank you. Ms. Pokarski, I would say maybe our next step, if we could make sure that we get some guidance from staff, if we need this to be a board directive from today's work session, that we would like to get a response back to ACSD on how staff are tracking the accountability piece that Ms. Lorenzen was talking about in terms of how the RASs are communicating out to principals.
Yes, Ms. McLaughlin. We don't have next steps, but we will definitely, I'll work with the chair and, and talk in chairs to address that. Thank you. Ms. Cohen, you're up next.
I certainly want to echo what my colleague, Ms. McLaughlin, just said. You know, I think moving away from that reactionary support for sure and into, into true oversight. I think as a sped parent, having to become subject matter experts and legal experts and, you know, the resources that it takes to be able to ensure that our kids are getting what they need to be successful, makes it very unattainable for a lot of our parents and, and families. So thank you so much, Connie, for your time here. And we really appreciate you. I just wanted to echo a little bit or maybe piggyback a little bit on, on what Ms. McLaughlin was getting at, which is, you know, your timing here is unique. Normally, we'd be seeing you, you know, in June. And so we are right in the throes of budget. And so I'm, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit about what are some of your concerns as now we're deep into the school year and especially as we work to start transitioning our kids back into buildings. Are there some areas that give you extra pause that we really need to be aware of as we come back in? You know, I'm hearing some concerns around recovery services, for example. What are some things that we as a board need to be on the lookout as we go forward in the next couple of weeks and months?
Well, of course, recovery services and helping parents understand that they can apply for a meeting to look and, with the IEP team to take eyes and to look at their student, whether they need recovery services. Teachers have been asked to do this, but parents can refer as well. And of course, the big difference between and clarifying between compensatory services and recovery services. And I don't want to speak for staff, but my understanding is that compensatory services are generally, and I'll summarize it, sort of a consequence of a district's failure to provide that which a student needs and is entitled to under the IDEA. All students lost education access. And so all students need to be looked at, any student needs to be looked at with regard to the need for recovery. I think one big thing, and this was recommended by your independent outside report on advanced academics, I think the district needs to provide a 2E specialist for the district to help parents and schools meet the needs of the most, of the largest group of unidentified people with disabilities in the nation. I, I think that the lack of understanding or knowledge of the needs of the student is great. And without appropriate support, those students will not ever reach their potential. I think that schools, if all the, you know, you need to look at how are recovery services going to be provided? Will that, you know, will that mean year-round school for a year or two? Will that mean for those students? But anyway, that needs to be explored. If you're asking, you know, think about it, you're asking teachers to refer students for recovery services and they don't know if that means they're going to have to provide them after school? They don't know how any of that works. And there might be some barriers to teachers. They don't they don't know how any of that works, and there might be some barriers to teachers identifying students if in fact they feel it's going to impact them personally uh, without compensation. That's the first thing that comes to mind. Those are the first two big items that come to mind. But there are uh, certainly a need for assist, for staff that rec, that provides supports, like the ATS staff, speech and language, all of those are going to be ginned up, I would think, for students who need additional time or additional hours. Thank you.
That's super helpful. Yeah, no, thank you so much, Connie. We appreciate your time.
Am I, did I cycle out, or am I?
No, you're here. We can hear you. Welcome on, Mr. Fresh.
Thank you. Hi, Connie.
I think I went.
You're still here.
Okay.
Uh, all right.
For putting up with my cellphone presentation.
You're actually the first person we've ever had problems with on Blackboard, so.
Well, I want a cellphone.
That's a bald-faced lie. I apologize.
The link wouldn't let me open on my old computer, the power, the the slides, so I'm on a cellphone, just the whole thing. And it's probably more my fault than anything else.
No, you're you're doing just fine, better than many of us. Um, so uh, I I appreciate all the work that went into this and um, you know, what led us to having this conversation so many months later than normal. Um, particularly uh, excited about one of the recommendations around not just making sure that the brochure gets into the right hands each year, that it's updated, but that maybe we go even further with a handbook for folks. Um, I think that could be very impactful. Um, you mentioned that one thing that you'd like to see is um, ACSD members, the committee being seen more of a resource or a support for the school division so that they come and, you know, be in contact with the committee better. One thing that the Public Engagement Committee is currently working on is a review of our advisory committees with an eye towards better utilizing their talents, making their work more impactful and helpful for the board. I didn't want to miss this opportunity to ask you, what do you think that could be changed, could be done, could be adjusted to make not just your committee, um, but all advisory committees um, more impactful for the board? And so that they feel like the work they're doing is not going for nothing? I know it's kind of an open-ended question.
Yes, we've, certainly this year, we've worked, we've collaborated extensively with the board, and and it's gone very well. But it's been time-consuming for both the board and the committee. Um, uh, I I think that the recommendations, this year, we've done something we've not done before, but is allowed in our in our regulation, and that is, we've done the periodic type of reports and recommendations. We've sent the board recommendations outside the field of the annual report. And I think that's been helpful. Uh, I think all the other advisory committees do annual reports. And I don't, I think that's good because it's a summary. If you go through it, you know, if you can help with a form or format and do it fairly quickly, uh, gives the board an idea of the work of the committee. Uh, but I think maybe encouraging other committees when issues arise that relate to that committee to make recommendations to the board when they are in process prior to decisions. And there's always at least four weeks. Generally, there's an item, and then the next month it's voted on by the board. So I think encouraging other advisory committees to do uh, some special reports to the board of their recommendations on particular issues or decisions of the board would be my. Rather than feeling they have to wait until the annual report. I don't know what all the other advisory committees do, but if they were to send it to Dr. to Dr. Braybrand or to the clerk, uh, whatever the board should decide is the strategy, probably Dr. Braybrand, so he knows about it, to be submitted to the board, I think that would be very helpful.
Good idea. I certainly appreciate, and obviously, the Public Engagement Committee, um, Ms. Ismoreheiser's, uh, our chair, um, will be in touch with our different committees to to get more feedback. But I didn't want to miss the opportunity to to put you on the spot with something you probably weren't expecting to think about. So uh, but I do appreciate all the work that went into this report and the reports that we've received throughout the year. Um, you know, I only have this one year to judge it against, but it has certainly been helpful. Um, and it has certainly kept me um, more engaged and more up to date on what's happening. Uh, especially um, with our our committee membership as we were talking about restraining seclusion. Um, so much appreciated. Thank you.
Well, you're very welcome. And the committee, like I said, really appreciated the opportunity to collaborate with the board and the and the outcome. You know, we're very pleased with the outcome, so.
And that's how it should fun, that's how it should happen for all for all of our committees, right? So.
Well, yes, and and actually, it was so out of pocket, I will tell you. Uh, it was a little difficult for me to send as many sometimes as often there for a while, uh, as as I sent, but I felt compelled, so.
Well, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. I am going to go ahead and take my turn, and then I think we're going to be wrapping up here today as we have gone over quite considerably, um, which is, you know, we rarely do. Um, Connie, I want to thank you. We never do that. Uh, I really want to thank you for the time you put into this. I mean, it's not just the time, it's the heart, um, that you and really the other members of the committee, there is so much expertise and and caring and real desire to work with us, to work with staff, to to really move the um, system forward. And I I think you do, and um, you know, I certainly find uh, everything you have to share extremely helpful. Uh, you know, regarding the the parent engagement, I do see a real need um, there. You know, I I I do think many schools may do a good job. You know, we've got that that fidelity of of implementation and that communication um, across our schools that we could absolutely improve upon. And, you know, whether that's a handbook or, you know, I don't know, maybe it's kind of like a parent boot camp that, hey, your kid is up for, you know, eligibility, and this is what it means. And maybe in different languages, but especially when we talk about equity, we want to make sure that we are empowering our our parents um, to have the the information uh, necessary to to really be partners and and help their students. So I I'm very um, much looking forward uh, to see uh, what uh, Mr. Bloom and the staff comes back with uh, you know, in in regards to your recommendations. So thank you for being here with us. Thank you for your flexibility. Um, we absolutely appreciate you uh, taking the time today.
Well, I thank you again. It's very kind of all of you to to appreciate the work of the committee and and myself. We really appreciate it. And and um, I I think that the idea that it's all parents and you write about equity, but uh, my clients often are completely deers in headlights, you know, they don't know. There's much information I think staff can put into a notebook that'll come right off the FCPS websites. It's in, it's in multiple languages already on the available on the FCS website. But if you don't know that it's there, it isn't accessible to you if you don't know how to find it. So um, you know, whether there's a special link on the website to this handbook, or all the forms are and whatever, uh, or whether parents are provided a sheet that links them to that, I don't know how it's going to look. But I'm looking forward to to starting it and revising it and doing what FCPS does. Make it better, make it better, make it better. So.
Absolutely. We can always do better, and we will. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Have a good afternoon.